Okay, good evening and welcome to the Happy Valentine's Day Board of Selectmen's Meeting, Wednesday, February 14th, 2024. And the, everybody here knows the emergency exits and so everybody here knows who they are, so we're gonna rise for the pledge.
Speedy.
Yeah. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay.
Good evening Mitch Goldblatt. Good evening John Corangelo.
And Annie Secretary to the Board.
Good evening Judy Williams.
Good evening PJ Shandley.
Okay. Public participation, public participation is for any item that is not an agenda item. We allow two minutes per speaker on the topic. Is there anybody in the audience for public participation? Seeing none. Is there anybody at the table with public participation? Mitchell?
Yeah, three things, but they're all brief. Number one, just to remind people, because I know the calls have been coming in, our next shredding day mattress collection, has waste collection, will all be Saturday, April 27th, at High Plains Community Center from nine till noon. There'll be articles in the paper about that as well, but just want to make sure everybody's aware of that, because I know that people have been interested, especially as they start their spring cleaning. Second of all, as, as passed by this board at our last meeting, we now have three textile clothing and shoe bins in town. There is one at High Plains where the one from Simple Recycling was, it's now Bay State Textiles. We have one at the transfer station, just to the left of the Goodwill trailer up on the top of the hill. And the third one is at the Highway Department, 308 Lambert Road, just behind the Valero Station. All three are gonna be serviced weekly, and all three are easily recognizable, they're white, and they, they have the logo of the Orange Recycling Committee and the town seal on them to indicate that these are the bins that people hopefully will be utilizing for clothing and shoes, because the money that we get will go to the town. And so I want to thank the board for their support, and Bay State for getting them out in an expeditious manner. And the third thing is, I don't know if anybody else noticed, there was a little bit of publicity about this, not as much as I thought there would be. Last month, January 27th, was International Holocaust Remembrance Day, and there's a movement among the, the nation, mostly in the Northeast, to light up buildings, structures, bridges, in yellow light, to recognize and commemorate the Holocaust. And I want to thank Jim Ziole for helping to light up, and Anne Denny, to helping light up Town Hall for that weekend in yellow. Orange Town Hall and Congressional Shalom were both lit up in yellow for the weekend in commemoration of that, and I want to thank, publicly thank Jim and everybody, hopefully we do it again next year. Thank you.
I, I under, I will say just this on one topic. I will, I do understand why it was yellow, which I think you should explain as part of it, and, but too bad it wasn't a different color, didn't show. People might wonder why it's yellow.
Yeah, yellow lights are hard to, hard to illuminate and, and show up the way other, other colors do. The yellow, well, yellow light is a commemoration of the yellow badges, the yellow Star of David that were worn by those in concentration camps and those in the camps in, in Europe to identify, be identified as Jewish. Some of you may be aware, we have a yellow candle fund, which now you give me the opportunity, Jim, which was actually started by my father many years ago, when he was in Massachusetts, is now an international movement to light yellow candles, usually in, in the April-May timeframe, which is Holocaust Remembrance Day, but the International Holocaust Remembrance Day is in January, is recognized by the United Nations, and so that's what was done here in, around, I mean Niagara Falls, Maryo Cuomo Bridge, Union Station in, in New Haven, set a couple of the town halls, and the lights, a lot of the lights were, were actually sponsored by, the lights here bought for Orange and for Shalom, were bought from the Arshalom Men's Club Yellow Candle Fund, which some people have been to our Kristallnacht program in the fall, which, which has helped for that too. But thanks Jim, appreciate it.
Questions on anything Mitch had before we move here?
Can I just ask the composting, how is that going?
Composting is going. I, I don't really know how well, I haven't gotten any reports yet from, we haven't gotten any bill yet, how's that, that I'm aware of, but I use it each week, and I see there's stuff there, and there's sometimes the bins are empty, which means they're being emptied, other times they're fuller. There are four bins at the top of the transfer station for people to bring for compost, and a lot of people compost at home, so that's, that's fine, that's great. But if you don't, and you can separate your food scraps from the regular recycling, regular trash, it'd be great, because, you know, you may notice, as I have, and most of you do, it's heavier, it's wet, it's, and it's helping to add, or in this case, take away from what we're spending on, on municipal solid waste removal. So, I encourage people to continue doing it, if it, if it continues, hopefully it will be a success, and we can keep it going. Thanks Judy.
Okay. Anybody else at the table? For public or announcements? Okay, then I just, I only have a couple, this is really quite amazing. But thank you for that Mitch, because people have been asking if that's working or not, so I said, I don't know. But anyhow, so the first item on the agenda is sad news, is the passing of your daughter. I think everybody here, and townwide, I think it was proven that Saturday, recognized Amy and loved her.
I know.
And we'll leave it at that, because that's as far as I can go. Monday, February 19th, 2024, all town offices will be closed in observance of President's Day. We got a one-day holiday, not the two, Washington and Lincoln. The transfer station however will be open. Date change, for the, for the Lions Club Easter Egg Hunt. The Lions Club Easter Egg Hunt will be held on Saturday, March 30th, rain or shine. If the weather is good, it will be outside. If it is inclement weather, it will be in the gym. They are changing the date not to interfere with the Mariel Tracy Children's Fair being held on March 23rd. That's very considerate, that's a nice thought there for the two of them, so I can bump the kids out of the way and get lots of eggs. Not. Oh, the last thing, it's not on here, and I'm sorry it's gonna, it takes time, but many people have been calling, emailing, or coming here and meeting with the revaluation staff regarding the letter they received in the mail with a new assessment of your homes. Everybody was thrilled when, in their homes, when they were seeing that their $300,000, $400,000 ranch was now going for 600,000, 700,000, and other houses, you know, 800,000, 900,000. But then when you got your reassessment, all of a sudden it wasn't so fun, because, well that's gonna double our taxes. Well, no it's not, because there's a mathematical equation, I probably should have done it on a poster board and put it up here. But, once the grand list is completed, now Mr. Sifarelli and I saw a rough out of the grand list today, which is pretty good. They take, the Board of Finance has to set a budget. There's over $4 million in requests for increases in the budget, and 1.7 million of that is from AMity. Part of it is population shift, and part of it is because they want or need more things. But it's a $4 million increase that needs to be looked at and evaluated, and not everybody's gonna get what they want. But you then, once the budget is set and passes referendum, that night, the Board of Finance will go into the room, and they do the mathematical equation, and the grand list collides with the past budget, approved budget, and that will be your mill rate. It will decline. I made a statement one day already, I think on Facebook, when people were all barking about it, that we thought it would be down in the mid twenties, and that's what it looks like, Mr. Sifarelli and I talking today. It is not cast in stone at this point yet, but that's where we're looking. Almost dead in the middle of the twenties, but that is not a promise, that is a speculation. But you're not gonna be paying 32-2-2 on your new assessment. It will be a lower mill rate, and that's driven by the budget, just so everybody out there understands. It's, it's a rather interesting process, and if you don't understand it and want to understand it further, please feel free to email, call, or come in, and Mr. Sifarelli or I can explain it to you very thoroughly, or even the assessor's office. Mr. Brancisi is back to work part-time, so we got plenty of people that can help you, and if you're unhappy with your reassessment, we have people down here, professionals, meeting with people, you have to make an appointment, the number was on the paper that you got, and you come down and meet with one of the two reassessment people, and they'll go over your thoughts and claim with you. So, that's it. Minutes, to consider and act upon the minutes of the January 10th, 2024 regular meeting. Were there any errors, omissions, or corrections? If so, state page and paragraph. If not, is there a motion to approve? Take your choice.
So moved.
Motion is made and seconded. No discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Poo? Uh? Yes. Monkey business. To consider and act on request to hang a banner to provoke the Strawberry Festival being held June 8th, 2024, and to waive the customary fees for use of the High Plains Community Center kitchen, Mr. Sigler is here if he wants to promote his event?
Yes, I would, thank you, Mr. Selectman. Good evening. My name's Bob Sigler, and I'm here representing the Orange Congregational Church and the Strawberry Festival, which I am a co-chair. Our Strawberry Festival this year is June the 8th, with a rain date of June the 9th, and this will be our 16th annual festival.
So it's one day?
Say what?
One day.
One day, yes. It just has a rain date of, of Sunday, but it is a one-day event from nine to five. Family event, hopefully a very nice community event for everybody. We will have the same, same types of things, red car show, kids' games, family event, music, hayride, and of course, a lot of good strawberry treats.
Blueberry shark?
Uh, no. That's another event. Anything strawberry that you can imagine, we probably will have it, so I thank you for your consideration.
Any questions for Mr. Sigler, otherwise is there a motion on that?
Motion made.
Is there? Okay, motion is made and seconded, no questions, no discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Close? Stain?
There's a motion to hang the banner, by the way.
Well, yeah. All of it.
Thank you very much.
All right. Item number two is Mr. Mongiello, to consider and act on request to enter the town, for the town to enter into an agreement for the Regional Cyber Assessment Protection Program under an RPIP grant, which is coming through, is that coming through COG? I thought so, Council of Governments. Mr. Mongiello is here to explain.
I'll need you to move to the side, I want to blind you.
Trust me, that's...
It's a very short slide presentation.
Nope, it is not a problem. I don't think.
Good evening, it's been a couple of years since I've been before y'all, and yes, it's usually to ask for a approval to enter into a contract. Again, very short presentation, it's six slides, I want to just start off with the brief, uh, brief history of it. At the national level, they come up with monies, they pass them down to the state level, then at the state level, they create these funds, and then each individual municipality generally puts together a request to get money. They've done this funding a little different, what they did was, they went out to the regional council of governments, and they said, hey, we're gonna consolidate as, as the South Central Region, we're going to approach the state, we're going to gather the money, and then any municipality that's part of our region can apply for it. So a slightly different approach. It actually streamlines the process, makes each municipality, takes some of the burden off of them. So, why are we talking about this? We hear cyber all the time, we want to keep it front and center, there's an investment that can be made, and the hope is with the investment that we reduce the, the costs that they show in the bullets over on the left side. With most programs, it begins with an assessment. Tonight, what I'm asking for is, in your enclosures, there is the scope of work, they call it. SCROG has not put together the cover page, which is the legal document that says, we're getting money from the state, and based on the work you do, you will get 50% of the funding back. They put everything else in there, they evaluated us, and they said, okay, this is what it will cost the town of Orange, this is what you'll be reimbursed. We're waiting for that final legal document, that's supposed to be out in a couple of weeks. So again, the program begins with an assessment, they go through, and, and I just want to point out one, one area. This NIST CSF, at the federal level, the National Institute of Standards in Technology, they created these cybersecurity functions, and they said, this is what we should be doing as a nation. We don't, we don't want the town of Orange doing this, and the town of West Haven doing that, or out in Texas doing something different. They said, let, let's come up with a uniform approach. The approach allows us now to score against one another. So the assessment is just that. They come in, they do an assessment not only with our team, but they visit every department. They want to know how we make changes in the department, how we add hardware, how we change our software, and then they evaluate us based on what's going on nationally. So it becomes a very uniform approach, and then it gives us our marching orders. So that's what they call downstream impact. They come in, they evaluate us, they already have a design philosophy in effect, and then they say, this is how you score, what are your budgets, this is what you can start working with. I want to bring it up, it's a four-year approach, we don't have to do everything within 12 months. So it's not like I'll be coming to the Board of Finance next year and saying, oh, they gave me 40 items to do, I need to get it all done within 12 to 24 months. We can look over a four-year period for that. And again, as I started off with, it's a regional performance incentive program, RPIP. It's administered through SCROG, and it's a five-phase approach, over four years, and the big number is, we get 50% reimbursement. What's included, what's not? The assessment, they come in, they tell us how we're doing, they compare us against what's going on nationwide. Program development, then they say, okay, based on what your peers are doing, this is the area that we think you should focus in. Then they have their programmatic phase, and then their regional shared services. I want to speak directly to that. There's still money, there's always money being provided. If they find that through this first phase, this analysis, that 80% of the municipalities throughout the nation are lacking in a particular area, the next batch of funding is gonna go to the state level and say, everyone needs to beef up their firewalls, we're gonna get 50% on that. So, they're talking about regional shared services, so there will be additional monies provided, it's in its infancy stage, there's no guarantees on that. But the idea is that they will get the feedback, and they'll start saying, where is this best spent? Where should we be giving matching dollars? Will it be 50, 50 cents on the dollar? I have no idea. But it's a living document, it'll always be evolving. Things that are not included, reimbursement for existing or ongoing IT-related expenses. So you can't say, well, Paul's salary, we're gonna pay 50% of it. We have fixed costs that will remain with the town. And then they give us a brief overview, and this is the final slide. Our scope, our agreement, our assessment, we analyze the data. When they say programmatic, they're saying, all right, well, how do you proceed? We're gonna give you some guidelines on how to proceed. If you follow those guidelines, you continue to get money. If you go off on your own, then that's your own initiative. And then in phase five, eventually programs end. What they want us to do is be self-sufficient, so they give us a roadmap on how do we continue to evolve. The word they love to use is living document. The last time we did an assessment, was when shortly after, or shortly before I joined, February 2018. We pretty much tackled everything in this assessment here, and we remediated items that, that they showed as critical. These new assessments now, and the biggest question on our insurance document for cyber insurance is, do you have a cyber plan in place? When something happens, do you know the A, the B, the C? How do you proceed to mitigate the loss as quickly as possible? How do you recover from it? And then, how do you proceed with business? So it's really a business continuity plan. There was a second document there, I am not going to read through it. Again, this is the assessment and statement of work. I'm gonna go down to the, where they come up with the costs. We are considered a small municipality, so they say to do an assessment just for the town is 17 grand. The police department is 17 grand. Last summer, we did one with the Army Corps, Connecticut Army Corps, they came in and did an assessment. All the assessment did for us, which was very valuable, was it said, here are your vulnerabilities. They handed us the final document, and they said, do whatever you would like with it. The assessment was free, so what they've done at this level is, they said, okay, if you've already had this assessment done through the National Guard, it's a, it's handled out of Danbury, out of the Army Corps area, they'll give us a discount on that. The total price to the town is 31,000, 50% back. Our cost would be 15,650. We want to embark this year before the new budget cycle. John and I have looked through my budget, we are going to steal from Peter to pay Paul. I'm gonna take existing consulting dollars that we've already budgeted for, to come up with the 15 grand. So what I'm, I, I, we have the money in place for the first year, the second, the third, the fourth year, we will, I'm asking for more money in next year's budget, so I don't have to take it from my consulting fund, all of it. But today's, or tonight's presentation was, that I would like to enter into this agreement with your approval, and, and how are we gonna pay for it? John and I have figured out the payment details. I know that's a lot.
It really wasn't, I really didn't think it was bad. I thought that was very understandable.
Okay.
This is just assessment, this is just the assessment phase, it's gonna cost 15,000?
Correct.
What would be, do you have any...
Junior Mike.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. Sorry, sorry. So, the 15,650, that is just for the assessment costs that will take maybe a year to do?
Correct, yeah, the assessment, when we start the assessment, they're looking to complete that over an eight-week period. So, we'll have the assessment well-done by the summer, and then from there, it's going to take them another three to four weeks to come up with the recommendations. That is just the assessment portion. This first assessment includes various other tasks that are included in it. So the first part of the assessment is, takes about 18 months. So then the, will I be approaching you again to say, right, here's our next contract? Chances are very good, yes, but, but what they've said to us is, based on what your assessment is, you should look to budget approximately that going forward, each year. So, but each assessment's different. I would really be excited to say that we, this is always forefront to us, that, sure, they're gonna find things, which is the point of it. But we're not gonna be in a situation as when I first started. We used to have four data centers here, High Plains here, Fire Station Two, and PD. We've consolidated down to Town Hall and PD. So we've really simplified and created a uniform approach, so.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
Oh, so I don't think anybody has an issue with your presentation or your recommendation, but is Novus the only company that you vetted to look at to do this? I mean, are there other companies?
COG did that part.
Okay.
Correct, yeah, so there are, there are multiple companies willing to do the assessment. It's, it's critical that they follow what's called the NIST standard. Believe it or not, there's not a lot of companies that follow the NIST standard. They follow what's called a CISA, which is a Word of Down version of the standard. We have two other companies we have spoken to on that. Flagship Consulting and Connecticut Computer Services, and they will do, they call it a penetr, a penetration test on, from the outside, trying to hack inward. It's not as thorough, it's not as thorough. We are speaking with a third company called Cyber Nines, we don't know what the price tag is on that.
I think Mitch had something.
PJ?
Paul, thank you. This was impressive and certainly needed. My question is, and I don't know if it's for you, or for Jim, or for John, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but do we know, to the extent of how much coverage we have for cybersecurity insurance? Do you know what our coverage is? Because I feel like this is protecting the front end, the insurance is protecting the back end while we're doing this, do we kind of want to do an evaluation of both simultaneously to make sure both are covered?
Right, I can't speak to the coverage limits and the deductible, I rely on John for that. So our, our roadmap in the past, yeah, our roadmap for the past couple of years has been the insurance application. Five years ago, it was a single page. This year, I've already been warned by Dan, he is, he is the, he handles our insurance. That cyber writer will be a five-page document, and one of the biggest questions they're asking is about the, have we had a current, and I have had a current, or we have had a current evaluation of our systems, but now 2018, it's, it's becoming dated.
Of course.
PJ, offhand, I, I don't remember what our coverage is, but I could look it up and send you an email on that, but our insurance consultant happened to be in today.
Okay.
And we spoke to him about this, and he was pretty excited about it.
That actually should help your premium.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing.
If, if I remember correctly, two years ago, there was only one insurance company that was doing cyber insurance, and I think our premium was like 70,000. And I believe this year it's down to 40, because there's three in the field. We also almost had a, a security breach at the police station four years ago.
Yep.
And we were able to manage it, and it was quite intimidating.
I'm sure. Yeah. So I'm glad we're doing this, and I'm glad we have that in the back end.
It's a proactive move on our part.
Good.
I have one question on here. Now, we are not the fire department, we all know that, we're a separate organization, but they have in the past, and now in the future, they've just... But they have in the past, and now in the future, they've just put in a new software system that goes to the police, fire, and fire marshal. Is, will that be reviewed through either the police department checkoff or the municipal assessment checkoff on there, you think?
Yeah, anyone who touches our network is, will be evaluated. So there will be an interview with the volunteer side for, for that. Yeah, because that, as you mentioned, that piece integrates in with our dispatch.
Yeah, I mean, it's brand new right now, they're still trying to get it, it's not quite there yet, yeah.
This even works with the Board of Education, because they're kinda tied in with us still, right?
Right, so to the extent that we have a connection over to the business office at the Board of Ed, that evaluation will occur. There is a completely separate program for the Board of Ed to pursue for all of their actual schools. But the, we feed data for some specific reasons from the Board of Ed through us over to the police department. Those will all be tested for how robust they are and durability.
Okay, so with those, thank you, Paul. So with those questions, we need a motion that will allow the First Selectmen to enter into an agreement with the COG organization. Once they provide the cover document and all, and that, once Mr. Montgillo has that, we will do. I think he gave a pretty comprehensive coverage of what it will cost approximately, and there is some government money involved there, and I think it's a good thing.
I'll make a motion as proposed.
To authorize the First Selectmen?
Yeah, well, I was just gonna say.
That's all.
A motion to propose the First Selectmen to be authorized to speak to COG regarding this program, or this particular.
There you go. Yeah, I've learned a little bit about it, I just finished my year as chairman of COG, so. Yeah, yeah. Paul Francesco from Bethany is now the chair for a year. Yeah, exactly, Mitch.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you.
I appreciate all the time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Stay? All good. Item number three is to consider an act on request to approve the contract between the town of Orange and Seward and Monday, who are our auditors. Mr. Sifarelli is running up to the podium again.
No, I don't run anymore.
Anymore?
No, I wasn't fast, but I did run in my younger years. Three years is up again. Time does fly. I asked Michelle for a new three-year contract, and this is what she gave us. It's a 5% increase, which I think is reasonable. I attached previous contracts for you to see, and I'm looking for your approval for it. They did go up a little bit on their per-hour work. And that's if we need additional services, like in the last year with the police contract. When we have retrocontracts, the police contract's a little difficult to do in-house, so Michelle does it for us.
Yeah, they do quite a bit of work for us. They're a good operation, we've had no troubles with them, they're extremely thorough. And we've all been happy with them, so.
And I think this is a really good price.
And when you think about going to the grocery store, putting gas in your car, oil in your tank, you know why they had to go up a little. Any questions for John?
But this one, quick question. Am I reading this current contract? It says 53,700, and proposed contract is 51,750?
Yes, because the previous contract included $4,400 because of our change when we went into Munis. They had to do a little more testing those, those years.
Lovely Munis system.
Four, okay, got it, thank you.
Actually, it's working out pretty good. They're getting, some of their other clients have now changed to Munis. And I think they're trying to get Bethany now, and Bethany is going on to Munis.
They're gonna get rid of their pads and pencils?
Actually, when we were looking for Munis, they were looking at it too, and we were trying to partner, and Munis won't let us. And the new finance director up there hates the software that they purchase, so they're going to Munis.
Okay, quick question for John?
Question, then possibly a motion. John, are we approving, being asked to approve just the town side or the town and Board of Ed?
Both, both.
Okay. All right, I'll make a motion that we enter into a three-year contract with Seward and Monday to continue our audit and financial statements for fiscal years ending June 30th, 2024, 2025, 2026. Cost not to exceed 51,750 for the town, and 71,700 for the Board of Education. Missed something?
You added them.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. 51,750 for the town, 19,950 for the Board of Ed, for a total of 71,700, thank you.
I'm sure they would love that. Okay, motion is made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Pose?
Stay? Thank you, thanks, John.
All right, item number four is to consider an act on the dates for the annual town meeting and budget referendum. The date, as it's been structured here now by the Board of Finance and all, the Board of Finance budget hearing is scheduled for Thursday, April 25th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. I presume, I don't know if it's gym, well, gymnasium or cafeteria, High Plains Community Center. They then suggest, do we have a? Oh, I see it down there, okay. April 8th for the AMITI, for their budget meeting. Okay, so the May 24 board meeting is Wednesday, May 8th. It is suggested to hold this meeting in the High Plains Community Center gym, as we have in the past, followed by the annual town meeting at 7:30 PM. Must be held no less than seven, no more than 14 days after the town meeting. Suggested date for the referendum is Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM, only at High Plains Community Center. The AMITI Regional District information, Monday, April 8th, 2024, is the district budget meeting at AMITI High School. The anticipated AMITI referendum date is Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at High Plains Community Center. This will be available, again, there's a lot there. If you call the Town Hall or email, we can give you that information. It will be publicized also. So that's what we have. Is there a motion on that?
Motion, motion is made to have the annual town meeting begin at 7:30 on May 8th, immediately following the Board of Selectmen meeting that day, at 7:30 at High Plains Community Center gym. And the referendum, the town budget referendum, to be held on Wednesday, May 15th, 2024, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at High Plains Community Center Gymnasium as well.
Okay, Ralph seconded it, I heard that. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? Stay? Done. Okay. Last year, there was a little eyebrow raise over the cost of the fireworks and all for the Fourth of July event. And this year, our concert is scheduled for Friday, July 5th, and the postponement date, rain date, is Sunday, July 7th. The fireworks go off at 9:30. You'll see, Anne worked very hard on this and got, because she contacted, and Rocky contacted, and Mr. Foyer. And the company that they're considering for tonight is Central Maine Pyrotechnics. It's the company that the fire department used last year. We do shoot off more larger shells than they do, which is fine, people go crazy for it. But, you know, so Central Maine, it will do it, and it's $19,000, as opposed to last year, we paid $25,000. The year before, we paid $20,000. And it will be as good a show as we've had. So, and like I said, Anne put this all together and was making the calls and gathering the information. So this is another one on Anne. She loves doing spreadsheets and searching stuff out. So, so the motion should be for Central Maine Pyrotechnics.
Make a motion to go, to go with Central Maine Pyrotechnics for 19,000?
Yep, very good.
Second with a question.
Go ahead.
The question, is that also our town donation? I mean, this is the company we're gonna go with in the amount.
We pay that part.
Okay, so we're gonna pay this part?
We do, that's what we have in the past.
Okay, does that mean that the rest of the show, if you will, for the band is gonna be sponsored by Orange Town News?
To the best of our knowledge.
Okay, okay. I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor? Pose? Stay? Huh?
Could we have a new tape when you do the fireworks this year?
What do you mean? Oh, well, it goes with the, oh, that part, that part. I don't, that's, the sound guy there. I do love Kate Smith at the end as, to close it out. I must say, she's a powerhouse. Last item here is to consider an act on the request to approve tax refunds totaling $8,346.48. And I don't see any of us on this.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Yes, Mitchell?
Before we move on to committees, can I, I'd like to make a request to the board, if I may. Our April meeting, I have a conflict, and I was hoping that we could possibly change the date of that meeting to either the next day, the following week, the week before.
Do you get a demerit if you miss a meeting?
Yeah, I do.
I mean, everybody here, including me, has missed a meeting.
Sure.
And you don't want to, but I don't know, I'm gonna leave, I'll leave it up.
Just ask it if it was possible.
I'll leave it up to the group, I'll leave it up to the group. I think that you might enjoy it, actually, and you might say, you're home tonight?
No, I won't be home, that's the problem. I'm out of town.
Okay, so what's the people's thoughts?
Is this room open other days that week? Thursday or Tuesday?
Well, Tuesday will still be open.
Tuesday is usually booked, whether zoning or something.
Thursday the 11th?
I can do Thursday 11th, I'm on trial, if I'm here, I'm here. No, but I'm on trial, so.
That means the trial went very badly.
Hopefully PJ's gonna postpone for me.
Everybody, can you all do the 11th? 11th work?
Thank you, I appreciate it very much.
All in favor?
Aye.
Your date is the April 11th.
Thank you.
Bench and board?
No report, because the next meeting is next week, February 22nd, and I'll report next meeting.
Fred Wolf Park? Or are you standing still at the moment?
Well, not really. We had a meeting in conjunction with the Orange Park and Rec on January 24th. We met in this room. The Orange Park and Rec allowed us to be on their agenda so that BNL could present different variations of, you know, traffic and safety studies, et cetera. There was quite a bit of public there, there was quite a bit of public input. Right now, what BNL is doing is gathering the data from that night, and hopefully we will receive that soon so that we can come back to this board and have a more thorough discussion about it. But it was, it was a well, I thought, and PJ can interject on this, but it was, it was a well-attended meeting. I know it wasn't all for Fred Wolf Park, but it was certainly a good meeting and a lot of good input, not necessarily for just traffic and safety, but for the whole park, the future of the park, I should say. So it was, it was, it was, well, it was enjoyable, I thought, to just sit back and listen to the comments.
You concur?
I do.
I think the neighbors, the people that live right there, had some really good ideas, things that they're seeing, so that was productive. BL took that down into consideration. So like John said, we're just waiting for their, for their cumulative feedback, and then we could come to the board and show you what we have.
I watched it, I watched it from home. I was very glad to see a lot of what they thought about was things that I had presented, another road going over to the lacrosse side, and the way to do the entry off Wolf Park and all, and it was kinda nice to see it. I didn't know I was an engineer too, but it was fun. Anyhow, okay, thank you. Capital planning, Ralph, are you all done with capital planning for now? You presented to the Board of Finance?
For now.
For now, okay.
Yeah, we submitted, I think I mentioned last month that we submitted 36 projects for 12.5 million dollars, prioritized with the help of the department heads and our committee. And now we wait for the budget, so. But I gotta congratulate the committee for getting everything done in three weeks, three meetings. They came prepared, and they worked well, so.
All right, excellent. Yes, Mitchell?
Yeah, for you or for Ralph, with that much being proposed, are we looking at all in the near future at another bond issue to handle some of the larger projects?
That would be made, not at this moment, because there's some things there that have to be explored deeper and further. And I actually, part of that is driven by that last flooding project, Brookside Glenbrook. And now also through the COG, Council of Governments, they're pushing for more road jobs because they have this, I forget what it is, 60, 65 million dollars has built up that they have to allocate, and they haven't been using it. And so Laura Francis, who's the deputy director, is beating all of us with a stick to come up with road projects. So I spoke with Mr. Britton. Now Pine Tree Drive, Peck Lane, is a lot sip project. And I spoke with the mayor of Milford, because there's a problem. Once that brook goes from there, it goes through Treat Farm, it goes under Old Tavern Road, which is old pipes. They could start that even as another project, and actually raise the road there. The road dips down as you go by the pond. They could put a, you know, a couple four-by-five culverts in there, and the road would just become level. So I told Mr. Britton to look at that. My PJ's house, it's got a huge pipe, but then it goes into Milford by, what's the burger, the burger place there? Plan B Burger, and they get flooded out, that parking lot there, he's brought it to my attention. And then from there, it goes underground, with pipes that can't handle it. Goes through, like where Panera is, over in there. And then it goes, there's a pond, the Clark's Pond, and back there, Milford, and that's where it goes. And then from there, that water goes through there, and then you'll see the marsh when you're on the highway, and the Connecticut postball is on your left, and there's a bunch of marshland on your right, right there, instead of getting off the exit for the truck stops and all. That's where that water goes. And then from there, I believe, from there, heads out to the harbor. Yeah. So, so that's, yeah.
So we start there to finish?
It's amazing how small the pipe is in the Whole Foods. It's like 24, I mean, it's.
I don't even think it's that big.
It's tiny. All that water flowing down, that's why that thing is always flooding, because there's nowhere to go. And the opening on the other side of the fence is enormous, so it just can't accommodate it all.
So I've spoken with the new mayor down there and his staff to look at it. Because if we could fix that spot at. Because if we could fix that spot at Old Tavern as part of this, as you had by Treat Farm, that would really solve our challenges. And, you know, there's a big area there that used to be a pond on the Treat Farm property. I don't know if as part of that, if Jeff and Shelby would be adverse to having a pond dug there, clean it out. It's all silted in. There's brush growing out of it. I forget what the name of those bushes are. But, you know, it could clean all that out, which would also help with water retention. It used to be a pond. When you go by, you see the spot where what was the spillway opening there and all. So there's a lot of moving parts to that one. But I've asked Bob to have the Cardinal work up the design as they're working on it for the Brookside Glenbrook one, and let's get that on as a lot sip project. And maybe we can get that one paid for. And that's, at this point, that's an unknown, you know, what that is too. So I haven't looked at bonding yet, but it's coming.
Well, my concern, and thank you for bringing us up to date on those projects. My concern is also the pool, which we never completed the dehumidification. I've gotten word from other people that it's been gotten worse. And, you know, I'd like to see that addressed before we have a real disaster over there.
Actually, we looked at a grant for that already.
Okay.
So there's a possibility of a quality-of-life grant that we may look at for that. But it may not be big enough, but we'll see, you know. But we are working on it, so... Anything else? Let's see, you did see, or maybe you didn't see, that Noble Gas got approved for the exit ramp. If you're coming from Milford, exit 41, on your right-hand side, all that will be demolished and all, and a new gas station and convenience and a showroom for energy-efficient vehicles will be built there. It's not a car dealership. It's a showroom. There's a difference. Because you're not allowed to, I don't quite understand all that. Mitch owns a Tesla. Tesla dealerships and these other dealerships are not allowed at this time. I don't know. But so we're seeing that. Ken Mike Tower sold last week. That was 4.1 million. The Grind is doing booming business, and the Pickle Spot on the front of it is almost ready to open, which they bought the former Odd Lot Comp USA building. That was also 4.1 million. You know, so things are going well.
Jim, the big question I keep hearing is, when do they, I mean, I now see a sign up at the apartments at Firelight. Those are now open for taking applications?
It's online. They have a website for it, Firelight Commons. And we looked at it. They look very nice. We had an economic development meeting there also. And I went there separately. But yeah, they're now starting to sign people up for that. Carol Martin's project on Smith Farm Road has come along, and she's working with us with regards to the affordable components and all. And so that's a good thing on that one. Very frustrating dealing with the people from Bricksmore. Matter of fact, Ann Marie contacted me today about another potential user for there. And I said, "Stop referring people to them. They've become a very dismal, non-supportive group." We had a great user, which three of us were all well aware of what it was. And I don't know what the problem was, quite honestly. And so I'm very disappointed with them, very, very disappointed. We brought them something that would fill that plaza. And they don't see it that way. I emailed the woman and man that handled it, the property manager, Chantel Voss and Mark Newman. And can't get anywhere with the... As a matter of fact, the guy, one of the people who was in the committee on the other side that wanted to go there has retired. So that made it even a little more challenging. But yeah, I'm pretty disappointed with them. Yeah, so...
While you're discussing items, any word on that Toll Brothers proposal that came to us that we decided to go to zoning first?
Um, well, you didn't have lunch with them, so it kind of messed them up. So I think that it's probably not going to happen. The guy sat in my office and outright told me, I had two men in there, and one was the Toll representative. And he said to me, "Well," he says, "if we don't get this approval for the sewer connection, that's it, because Toll's not going to put any more money into this until we have that approval." I said, "That's not the right process. That's not how it works." I said, "Maybe you got to do it that way in Woodbridge," I said, "but it doesn't work that way in Orange." I said, "By doing that, the land use boards will get a false impression that since we supported it, you know, that, you know, they better pass it." And so to the best of my knowledge, they have not come back with anything at this time. I don't know if they're going to or not. That's up to them and the property owners. So I can't, I'm not involved in it, so it's a private deal. So we did hear, after that discussions, we did hear from, I think, received some emails and stuff from people that were very concerned about it over there with these little roads and narrow roads and, you know, heavy traffic from, what was it, 75 or 80 units coming out of there? I mean, because let's face it, they're not all going to take a right and go up to the post road. So, you know, there were a lot of concern over that. So there has been no more on it. That's all I have tonight. So there's a motion to adjourn at 8:00.
All right.
Made by Ralph. Jumped right on that one. We are adjourned. Bye-bye.